Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin this meeting, I ask you to silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, the audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items Section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board, you can must provide them to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we'll provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphones if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Aunt Taveros. The time is 6:01 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. Then we have a presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. One will please join me in standing for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On further than the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Lee Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. First up this evening, we have our recognitions, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. If the board would join me in front of the dais, we're always excited to welcome and recognize our outstanding students.
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we've got two outstanding young ladies here this evening that we'd like to honor from Brazos Bend Elementary. Can I please have Ms. Amberly Pilarzik come on up? And we also have Ms. Bouvi Sangavi, both from Brazos Bend. They're both honors choir students. Amberly has a heart for serving others. She volunteers at a local animal shelter. She makes blankets for the anti-child abuse advocacy group, and she sings at a local nursing home and is currently involved in several donation programs. Bouvi's also won awards for helping nature. She enjoys Indian classical dance, and she has earned a brown belt from Tiger Rock Martial Arts. Congratulations to both the young ladies, and thank you for being here. Let's give them a round of applause. And if anyone here from Brazos Bend to support them, if you'll please stand for recognition. Thank you very much. That concludes our recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Sofer, and thank you all for being here. Next up, we have our audience items. First up this evening, we have Emerald Romo. You'll have three minutes to speak. Ms. Helliger will keep time for you, and she'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of the school board and Superintendent Dupree. My name is Emerald Romo, and I am a teacher at Ridgemont Elementary. My colleagues and I are extremely concerned with the lack of consistent disciplinary policies at our school, and we want to bring attention to the issue of aggressive student behaviors compounded by lack of support on our campus, making it nearly impossible to do our jobs and teach. Discipline is and has been an ongoing issue since the start of the school year. Students with patterns of unsafe behavior run amok in the classrooms and hallways of our school without consequences. This has placed a great deal of stress on myself, my colleagues, and our students. On September twenty-seventh, I was assaulted by one of my students who was initially attacking another student. I was kicked in the leg and punched on my arm. This student then returned to his original victim, chasing him through the hallway, punching him, kicking him, pushing him down to the ground, and kicking him in the head. This behavior is shocking but not uncommon, and I took action using all my experience and training to no avail. My teammate was also assaulted by one of her students. This student threw a chair hitting her, causing contusions. We both filed for mandatory removal of our students under the Safe Schools Act. Instead of placing both students in a DEAP, the district decided it would just switch them, replacing one violence-prone student with another. There are students that can be seen screaming, punching, throwing metal weights and bricks at adults on a daily basis. They roam in packs through the school threatening and intimidating other students. Students leaving class without permission is an everyday occurrence. These students with a history of aggressive tendencies and violent behavior are hitting kids over the heads with iPads, throwing chairs in our classrooms, and pushing, flipping, and knocking down furniture both in the classroom and in the cafeteria at lunch. No matter what we do, the administration does not back us up in our attempts to restore order, as there are no consequences for these behaviors. Actual riots happen in the hallway due to inadequate staffing. Frights break out on the playground. Assistants call for over-the-radio only for no one to show up after three to four calls for help. Administrators have ignored defiant students standing in the hallway, or they themselves call for the teacher or aides to assist because they cannot get students to comply. In closing, we would just like to say that we do take a lot of physical and emotional abuse from our students because we are still expected to do our jobs, but we are asking the Fort Bend ISD Board to investigate our concerns and help us remedy the situation because, at the end of the day, we just want to teach in an environment that fosters a positive learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Next up is Dr. Umberto Gallardo. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have thirty seconds.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Dupree. Making mistakes is better than faking imperfections. We, the Richmond staff, do not expect a single individual to be perfect, but in order to ensure the success of our students and to eliminate the unacceptable title of improvement required, we're in dear need of an organized, supportive, and proactive group of school leaders to help us win this battle that so many of us are fighting hard to achieve. Our current leadership seems to be ill-equipped with the skills to effectively tackle the challenges that make it hard to do the job that we were handpicked to do. Due to a lack of structures, systems in place, and communication shortfalls, we are often told during daily planning meetings that we must complete certain tasks that are due before the end of the day or with very little notice to allow us time to prepare without sacrificing other prioritized tasks. For example, emails that the same day that the tasks is due or emails, texts that are sent on weekends with expectation to have an item ready Monday morning. We receive different instructions communicated by members of the instructional leadership team who assign tasks but do not provide clarification on what, when, or how to do it. It becomes confusing to even complete what is asked of us, so we often leave meetings still confused and unsure about how to implement yet another item in our never-ending checklist. Our emails and weekly newsletters often present conflicting dates and deadlines, which leave us frustrated more than before. Our staff are overwhelmed and exhausted as it is, but the lack of clarity and implementation provides more frustration. The daily pressures and unrealistic timeframes have caused several members of our Richmond family to seek medical attention due to the demanding workloads and unrealistic expectations. Adding to the many deadlines, we continue to have meetings marked as mandatory after school several times a week. This is time that we'd like to use preparing lesson plans, grading papers, or calling parents without having to sacrifice our personal lives by holding extra tasks home or staying at work until you end up closing the building with the custodians. We continue to go to work because we care about our kids and our coworkers, and although we chose Richmond, Richmond also chose us to help make it better. But it doesn't seem as though our help is truly solicited because we get blamed for everything, even if it was beyond our control. Without realistic, supportive, and caring leadership, we, who truly involve us and value our opinions, we will continue to be an allergy in improvement required. We care because we came to showcase our talents and get the job done, but we cannot do it if we are exhausted behind the task, and thus, meaning preparation. Please investigate this and help us remedy this situation so we can become the edge campus the community can be proud to support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the audience members, please, not to have outbursts. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gallardo. Thank you for being here. Next up is Dr. Brandy Buford. Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
Yes, ma'am. An educational environment in Fort Bend ISD must uphold the district mission to inspire and equip all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. The board and human resources of Fort Bend ISD spent hours of research, finances, resources, as well as attached their names to the Edge program and to the faculty of Edge at Ridgemont Elementary to ensure we all fulfilled the mission of the district. We knew, in order to fulfill the mission of Fort Bend ISD, we must have a climate and culture necessary to nurture and facilitate the potential of all learners. Unfortunately, our staff have not had the opportunity to fully nurture our students, efficiently facilitate learning, nor provide an exceptional professional collaborative environment your students and faculty deserve due to the hostile working environments. Your Edge teachers arrive as early as 6:00 AM to ensure their classrooms provide the nurturing environment students need to feel loved and know they are being educated. It is during these early morning hours that your Edge teachers also combat passive-aggressive remarks, which are defined as coaching techniques. If it were really coaching, from personal experience, would I have had to calm down my students because they thought I was going to be fired after a coaching session? If it were really coaching, the administration would not correct your Edge teachers in front of other Edge teachers and students in the hallways, causing additional stress, embarrassment, and loss of student respect. Notwithstanding, regardless of the coaching techniques being utilized this year, techniques which have caused increased anxieties and illnesses, myself and my colleagues continue to provide exceptional instruction and fulfill the unrealistic expectations because we are your Edge teachers. Your Edge teachers have attempted to remain faithful to the initial vision crafted by the district personnel. A majority of your Edge teachers return to Ridgemont because we love our students, we love to educate, we love one another, and most importantly, we remain hopeful that everyone, everyone, would have learned from their mistakes last year so that the campus would get out of improvement required. Your Edge teachers engaged in more cohesive lesson planning during the summer, the multilingual collaboration to ensure equitable instruction regardless of the classroom linguistic design. Unfortunately, cohesion is thwarted with divisive speeches. These speeches encourage your Edge teachers not to trust each other within and across grade levels because of all our words have a way of returning to administration and conclude with threats about lost referral opportunities. Collaboration is thwarted because your Edge professionals support staff, and teachers are afraid to openly and honestly share the realities of the campus' needs and concerns to area superintendents or superintendent due to verbal threats of retaliation. Aside from the concerns of retaliation from expressing the needs and concerns, your Edge teachers receive constant reminders that administration knows so many higher-positioned personnel in the district that no one would ever believe your Edge teachers. I am your Edge teacher. I am here for our Edge teachers and students, and your Edge teachers are here tonight asking you to help you to ensure the vision is fulfilled at Ridgemont Elementary.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Dr. Buford. Thank you for being here. All right, next up is our information items. First is gonna be our emergency declaration purchase update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Perez is gonna provide an update on emergency declaration purchases related to Hurricane Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. Since my last report on October twenty-third, the Design and Construction and Facilities has continued to reconcile and execute contracts with the vendors, and as the pricing is being refined and contracts are being finalized, we have gone ahead and reduced an additional amount from last month to this month of four-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. So, at this point, since my initial report in September, we have been able to reduce as we've reconciled the contracts by five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. And so, we will continue to do this in order to get all the contracts finalized, and once we have that in place, then we will be providing a final report to the board. At this point, because we're, the months are kinda tied on us with November and December, it, we're probably looking at going into January. I was hoping to get it closed out before the end of the year, but as it's going, I think it's probably gonna be January before I can issue the final report with the actual, you know, final dollar amount.
Okay, you think that'll be ready by the January board meeting? Is that what your expectation is?
We're, we're hoping to get everything reconciled by January. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have questions from the board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. All right, next up is our strategic planning update. Are we doing this along with the bond oversight?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so the strategic planning update and the bond oversight committee update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, so we're gonna actually begin with the bond oversight committee update and then flow right into the strategic planning update. I'm gonna, I don't know who's gonna lead off, but it's gonna be a combination of folks between Mr. Perez, Ms. Martinez, and probably Mr. Bassett.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Actually, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be turning it over to Oscar Science and Carolina for the first part, and then we'll flow into it, so.
Good afternoon, Madam President, board members, Dr. Dupree. We're gonna deliver a presentation that we delivered previously.
Let me start over. Good afternoon, Madam President, board members, and Dr. Dupree. We're gonna deliver a presentation that we previously delivered to the bond oversight committee. I'm excited to deliver part of the presentation because we've done so much in this bond program. We'll start moving into the presentation that's gonna show you that we've committed seventy-six percent of this bond program, which is about three-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars. That means that we've committed more than half of this bond program. We're, we've already spent about sixty percent to date, and you can see a lot of the growth, a lot of the expenses that we had, because we've been able to successfully open three elementary schools. We just recently had a groundbreaking for a career and technology building. We're close to opening up a middle school, and we have six additions that we should be opening up, or six campuses with additions that we should be opening up by the end of this school year. So, the cost to date, the committed numbers that you see in front of you are reflective of all the work that's been happening in this past couple of years. That means that about seventy-seven percent of the bond program is complete. Phase one is about eighty-seven percent complete. Phase two is about eighty-four percent complete, and phase three is about six percent complete. That means that in phase one, twenty-one campuses are currently under construction, but we should be finishing up all of those campuses within the next six months and get them into the closeout phase. Phase two has six campuses that are currently being bid and negotiated. As a matter of fact, we're hoping by February of this coming year to have all of phase two under construction, and the phase three projects are currently in design, and we should see all of the, all of the campuses in construction again early next year. The next work that needs to complete is, in phase one, we obviously need to finish out all of the, all of the construction and get into the closeout and warranty period. Phase two, we need to move from construction, or we need to finish out construction, and again, probably middle of next year, you'll start seeing all those, all of those projects finished out. Phase three, we'll start seeing those projects, a hundred percent of those projects in construction, and again, finishing by the end of next year. So what does that mean? That means that when we first started this bond program, you gave us a goal, and the goal was to complete this bond program in four years. Right now, we're right on track in completing that bond program with that goal that you gave us. We're gonna complete that bond program within time, within the appropriate time that you gave us. Carolina's gonna speak a little bit about some projections, so you'll see that the bond program is well under budget. It's a very healthy bond program right now. A lot of it has to do with the way it's been managed from the board members, from administrators, down to the nuts and bolts, down to the contractors doing the work. So, so far, this bond program is really healthy, and that's one of the reasons why I was excited to report on it. Carolina?
All right, so we'll move on into the projected program budget. As you can see, our current commitments, which include the approved change orders, bring us to three-hundred-and-seventy-one million. We have another one-hundred-and-one million on estimates and pending change orders that are actually going through the system. And so, with a total projected budget of four-hundred-and-seventy-two million, we are now looking at a program balance of eleven-point-three million. So this is available contingency funds that we have currently in the program. This is a good, healthy number. The only thing to highlight here is this, this is a dynamic number. This number will continue to go up and down throughout the rest of the program. Wanted to give you an update on Willeridge, and so here's just a summary of the timeline on the work we have left until we get to move the students back in. So our target is to move the students back in right after the Christmas break. Students would move in on the eighth, and teachers would return on the fourth back into Willeridge. As you can see, we had an impact with Harvey of two weeks at the end of August, and even then, we have worked hard to keep the schedule on track to get the students back in. We are working on paint on the interior of the building, and then we truly are working on deactivation activities, which is coordinating all the different tasks that need to occur for us to be able to bring the students back into the school. Regarding the HVAC work, we are going to make sure that all the interior HVAC work is completed before the students return. We are still going to have some exterior HVAC work, which will probably go until the end of March. But then again, this is due to the long lead items linked, long lead time on the chillers for the replacement and the design time that we had to spend on that. And we also wanted to share with you some progress photos of the additions. These are some of the school additions we've been working on. As you can see, we've made good progress. And the target dates for the six classroom additions are right here displayed. What you can see is we have actually on shift and scan the notes completed and activated those classroom additions, so students have been able to move back into the building. And then we have the other four classroom additions, which will be completed and fully activated before the Christmas break. I'm gonna pass it on to technology now.
Okay, so we are on our way to finish the Wi-Fi installation within the various schools. We have about twenty-five schools left in phase two and phase three. As you can see, phase two, we have fifteen schools. They are in progress. The cabling's are completed, and then the powers as well. The equipment, we're ready to, we have already ordered, and we are starting to install those things. We estimated sometime in November, late December, to start the deployment. Phase three, we're about ninety-five percent complete in the cabling. The one Colony Bend is, haven't been completed because we have to build out the new closet to handle all of the cabling. So we estimated all of the Wi-Fi should be completed by the end of summer twenty-eighteen. So all schools should have wireless throughout the campuses. The camera projects, we are in progress as well. So phase one, we're continuing to finish it. We're about ninety-five percent done, and then I won't bore you with the other phase two and phase three. We are estimated to complete everything by, hopefully by summer of twenty-eighteen as we project it. The fiber, when that's pure speed light wave, we are nearing completion of that project, ninety-two district sites, if you will. We are starting to migrate to Windstream off of the, sorry, onto the pure speed light wave fiber. We, to date, we have done about fifty-five sites. By the time it's all said and done, we will have estimated a saving of, realize a saving of about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar annually. And we're estimated, hopefully, migrate all the rest of the site by the end of this calendar year. As for the core site to create redundancy, we are turning these two sites up, the Austin High School and Elkin High School, hopefully by the end of the calendar year, if not by early of next year, twenty-eighteen. Colocation-wise, we are anticipating to turn it active by February twenty-eighteen and then get it online by summer of twenty-eighteen to have fully redundancy within our network. So that means that once we are fully, I guess, taking Schoology and all the digital resources on, we should have redundancy to where we have continuous connectivity throughout the campuses. I'm sorry. So this is just to give you the status of all, statuses of all of the campuses, and if you notice, Colony Bend is still zero percent because we have to build out the main distribution room. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Communication, which is Veronica.
Very good. You'll see on the slide that we took a snapshot of the website. We do maintain that every month, and we post all of the reports. Those are kept current. We also had a three-page update in our last issue of Fort FBISD News Magazine, which goes out to approximately one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand district addresses, included photos and details and charts. And we also held the three dedication ceremonies and the groundbreaking.
On the small business side, we've updated the numbers to show October, that out of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine million contracts, approved construction budget, fifty-eight-point-one is for SB contractors. It's a small decrease in the percentage, twenty-two percent. We're still working to get toward the board goal of twenty-five percent. One of the actions we've taken, Ms. Bowler's actually gonna be working directly with the Design and Construction folks on a regular basis. She's housed over there now to work with them to try to get that percentage up higher. Switching gears, talking about debt, sorry for the small size of some of these slides and the numbers on here, but if you have them in front of you, some of the main things to point out, our total outstanding principal is nine-hundred-and-forty-four million, and that's even with us having issued two-hundred-and-sixty million of bond twenty-fourteen, so we've been paying down quite a bit. Some of the important numbers on this slide, I think, are the ninety-two-point-three percent that's of our total debt structure that's gonna be maturing within twenty years. Our balances, in terms of our voted authorization that we still have yet to issue, is a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-three million. And with all the transactions we've had recently, we've been able to maintain our ratings with Fitch and S&amp;P of double-A plus. We did a refunding of the commercial paper. This was the second tranche of our commercial paper program. We, we did these on a variable rate basis with forty-five million in green bonds at a three-year rate of one-point-three-five percent, and then fifty million of regular bonds at a four-year rate of one-point-five percent. So we're very happy with those, with those percentages for that amount of time. We did a refunding later in the month of a hundred and, almost a hundred and five million of our oh-eights and oh-nines. And again, so those refundings, what we're basically doing is just like you're refinancing your home, we're refinancing bonds that were in place some time ago. We were able to save one, fifteen-point-two million with the total interest cost for all of those bonds that we, that we refunded, one-point-nine-four percent. The average maturity of those bonds is six-point-eight-six years, and we have more that we could do in refunding for the two-thousand-eights and two-thousand-nines, but this is the amount that we felt was prudent at the time, given the, given the market conditions. So we still have, you know, work to do in the CT Center. While they've broken ground, we're financing the initial, the initial cost of that with the, with the general fund through reimbursement resolution. We will be going to market to finance that. That'll be a taxable transaction in the February-March timeframe. That'll depend on the cash flows. We'll do a refunding of our commercial paper again in the April-May timeframe. We have twenty million outstanding on this next tranche of, of commercial paper. And our current refunding, we'll take the rest of the two-thousand-eight bonds, we'll take that in the May-June timeframe, and so that'll be on a current basis for the remaining bonds, and then we'll probably do a portion of the two-thousand-nines, depending on the market conditions, in the May and June timeframe. So with all of the transactions that we did, we did an update of our tax rate analysis. So assuming we have a five percent property value growth in the next three years, three percent six years after that. So assuming we have a five percent property value growth in the next three years, three percent six years after that, and no growth thereafter, doesn't include the two hundred and twenty-two million of future bonds that we have available in the near term to be able to refund. So that'll help with this analysis I'm gonna show you. But it does include the additional two hundred and fifty-three million of bonds from twenty fourteen and the remaining amount from two thousand seven at a fixed rate thirty-year basis with interest rates of four point two five percent to four point five. And then also assuming we did a five hundred million dollar bond in twenty eighteen. Again, fixed rate thirty years with the interest rates ranging from four point seven five percent to five point seven five percent. So I think this is, you know, very conservative projection. So with all of that, you can see how our debt, if we were doing those assumptions there, how that would compare to our collections at twenty-six pennies. The twenty-six pennies is the line at the very top there. We have a little bit that we'll need to, you know, watch in those, in those beginning years of the twenty eighteen bond. But we're confident we'll be able to either cover that through our fund balance or through issuing a variable rate debt and the refundings and such. But we're very confident we'll be able to manage to our twenty-six pennies. So with that, we're gonna switch gears and talk about the planning.
Thank you, Steve. So moving into our comprehensive approach to planning for facilities, I'll draw your attention to the facilities master planning process. We'll be looking at our long-range projections to make sure that we're utilizing our buildings to the greatest and most efficient way possible while still providing a creative and innovative approach to instruction for all of our students. Part of this process will include recommendations possibly to evaluate boundaries, to look at building additions, and our renovations of new schools, construction of new schools and renovations of existing schools within our current situation. This information that we gather from the community during this process will feed into the capital plan, where we'll develop a list of those projects, those items that we determine in need of construction or renovation. And that will then be the projects that we look at to identify as needed for the twenty eighteen bond program development. So with that, I'm gonna ask Oscar to share with us the beginning of the facilities process with the assessment and educational specifications.
Yes, ma'am. So as y'all know, we came to the board and approved PBK to assist us with the facilities assessment. They, that is underway, and they have gone ahead and to date already done fifteen sites, and they continue to work. What they did was they went ahead and worked with our internal folks to go ahead and hear them out, see what it was that they were already aware of. And then, once they took all those notes and everything, then they go and they start meeting the site, visiting the sites on their own in order for them to go ahead and then come back and give us a comprehensive report on what they're seeing. This is going to include, you know, the life cycle, the deficiency. It's going to, they're going in, reading every nameplate that's out there on equipment, you know, making sure that when this all comes back to us, we have a document that we will be able to maintain and take forward as we move through and we're, you know, replacing, whether it be through bond work or whether it be just, you know, in M and O. We need to be able to keep that up to date so that we can have a running tab on what it is and what the district is looking like, and also so that we can plan for budgeting, not only for future bonds, but also for budgeting within, you know, our own department. In addition to that, they also are assisting us with the educational adequacy. So as you know, they came in and they met with, you know, some of y'all to go ahead and gain the guiding principles so that they could then go out and start working on the educational specifications. That's gonna entail doing a little tweaking to the elementary specifications, and then actually developing the secondary, middle, and the high school specifications. That is underway. We're in the process now of setting up community meetings and also meetings with the department heads. And then, once they develop a draft, we'll be coming back. We'll presenting, be presenting a draft to this board, hearing, getting, gaining y'all's feedback, going back, and then eventually coming back with a final document that we would hope to get approved.
Following that, we'll be conducting our building utilization study in cooperation with Cooperative Strategies who'll be facilitating this process. They're doing some desk work now in terms of that utilization study where they're analyzing floor plans of campuses and master schedules, looking at period-by-period building usage of each building so we can start from there and know how we're currently utilizing so we can then make recommendations moving forward. The work with the community and the steering committee will begin in January and be culminating in May of twenty eighteen when we come to you with recommendations in the facilities master plan. There will be community engagement, which I'll go into in more detail here shortly when we look at the timeline. And throughout this process, we'll be using the PASA enrollment projections from our updated demographic report for the short-term and long-term, long-range planning. Part of the information, or the information that Oscar just shared with you with the facilities assessment and the building utilization information will fold into the process of determining the options that we'll bring to the community and then to the board to ultimately shape the recommendations regarding any new construction, renovations that may be needed, any suggested new boundaries, and any change in program implementation or expansion of programs. We'll be looking at very innovative approaches and research in those areas to make, one of our goals is to make sure that our kids in Fort Bend stay in Fort Bend schools. They don't leave us to go to charter or private schools, and that we're able to have the utilization within our district to be able to provide those services in an innovative way. It's important to note that the master planning process, the facilities master planning process, is not going to establish new boundaries. But an outcome of this process may be that there are theoretical boundaries that are noted, as we did in our former practice or in the former facilities master planning process, where based on those projected enrollment numbers, we're able to set future theoretical boundaries, what makes sense today based on those numbers, so that we can then begin a boundary study as a next step. The capital plan is that next step in the formation of the bond program for twenty eighteen, and that will come out of the facilities assessment and the master plan recommendations. We'll be able to provide a list of those schools that we believe need renovations, maybe additions, classroom additions based on our projections, or any recommendations for new construction. With, as I mentioned or alluded to, with that goal being that we have future-ready schools. That's kind of the otherwise known as, or formerly known as, twenty-first century, but we're year twenty seventeen. So future-ready schools, and really being mindful of our fine arts and athletics and ensuring that we're creating spaces that meet the needs of these programs and the students in the programs as we look at not only new construction, but even more importantly, renovations to existing facilities. And so you received a timeline in this presentation, and you received prior to tonight a more detailed timeline that lines out the district strategic planning efforts with the bond and facilities planning and incorporates the profile of a graduate. This slide really outlines the alignment or the parallel work of the bond planning and the facilities planning. So I'd like to draw your attention first, which is not in the normal flow, but to the bottom red arrow. That bottom red arrow denotes the activities and the work associated with the facilities master planning process. And it will begin with that engagement with Cooperative Strategies, looking at our building utilization, and then move in January to our work with the steering committee, the thirty-member steering committee recommended by you all as board members and Dr. Dupree. And then we'll have community engagement activities where we gather input from the community based on the information shared with them in our futures conference that starts with the work of the board, with the mission, vision, core beliefs, and commitments and profile of a graduate. And then really has the community take a deep dive into what does education look like in the future and what are our needs in Fort Bend. We'll have several opportunities throughout the spring for large-scale community engagement and feedback into the process. And we'll be working with the steering committee in that advisory role to create those options, get feedback on the options from the community, work with the board through the board update, established work sessions and board meetings. And then bringing to you in May, the updates to the facilities master plan, which will incorporate all of that work for you, for your consideration. Then I'll draw your attention back up to the blue arrow at the top, which shows at a high level the milestones for our bond planning, beginning with the formation of the bond oversight committee in December. And then you can see moving forward through five rounds of bond oversight committee meetings, ultimately resulting in the bond election in November of twenty eighteen. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Steve, and he'll take you further into the capital planning and development of the bond program. Or Carolina, sorry.
So as we move into the twenty eighteen bond planning, we've started looking into some critical projects. Elementary School Fifty-One is currently under design. But we're looking into the design fees for some HVAC critical, HVAC systems that are critical and critical state that are not covered under bond twenty fourteen in about six or seven campuses. And so what we would like to do is get a head start on those, start working through the design and engineering of those systems, fund it through the reimbursement resolution so that when the bond passes, we are ready to start construction and address those issues in those schools. We also have some structural issues for Hall Stadium and Mercer Stadium, and the same would apply. We want to get a head start on the design and engineering so that we can start construction as soon as the bond passes. And with that, we've started looking into the bond twenty eighteen approach. We had mentioned previously this whole blended approach that we were looking into. And so as you can see, this is our proposed twenty eighteen org chart. Gray boxes are Fort Bend ISD employees, and the brown boxes would be a consultant, third party. And as you can see, it is truly a blended approach. The goal is for the district to take on the leadership positions and to lead the program, and then get support from the third party. We are still working through this, through the details. This is a conservative approach. And so we'll continue to work through this with the goal of going next year with an RFQ to qualify and select that firm that can potentially help us with this, and so that all that groundwork is ready. When the bond passes, we can get to work. And if there are any questions?
Well, thanks to the team for that presentation. Does the board have questions, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mrs. Hassan. I would just like to thank Ms. Facetti and Mr. Perez, Signs for their presentation. I noted from your slides, you have fifty-four campuses under construction at the present time, which is a logistical challenge. Was really glad to see the six elementary school additions and renovations are gonna be completed before school is out for the winter break. That gives us adequate time to move in. It's really good, very positive. One question at Willeridge, we're replacing the chillers there, and that is a long lead item. Did I understand you to say that?
That is correct, sir. We're replacing three chillers.
Sorry?
That is correct. We're replacing three chillers.
Three. Do we know how old the existing ones are?
I am not exactly sure, Oscar.
You can tell me later.
Yes, sir. I can get you that information.
Yeah. So anyway, I would just like to say that's a good job, and thank you for the presentation and looking at that. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Pham for his technology report because prior to Dr. Dupree's arrival, I know that the technology in our schools was seriously lagging. That's a tremendous effort to get the Wi-Fi installed and the cabling at all those campuses. I was really pleased to see you were able to switch from Windstream to pure speed light wave and save six hundred and fifty thousand dollars annual savings recurring. That's very, very good.
Yes, sir. Once we complete the switch over from one to the other, as we complete, we shut down and turn off the Windstream circuits.
That's awesome. And then, Ms. Sofer, thank you for all your hard work, and Mr. Perez, and keeping the community informed of this in a very upfront, transparent manner in multiple formats on our website and in the printed material. I think that's, so goes such a long way to keeping the community informed. And then, Mr. Bassett, I've saved my choice questions for you. Question number one, our variable rate, the percentage of our variable rate is now at seventeen point seven seven percent. Do I recall from Mr. Vissinior's previous presentations that that should not exceed twenty percent?
Actually, twenty-five percent is what we have in our policy.
Twenty-five percent. We've been lower than seventeen percent.
Yes, yes. We were recently as low as nine before we did that last transaction in October.
Okay, but it bumped up with the last transaction. But we're still Fitch and S and P double A plus, pretty strong.
Yes, sir.
And then, we save fifteen million dollars on refunding a hundred and four million from our oh eight and oh nine. Is it reasonable to assume we could save then thirty million or so if we're refunding two hundred and twenty-four million?
Yeah, that's, that's the target.
Okay, and with that tool available to us, you feel like we could get through two thousand eighteen? Well, it looks like it doesn't really, this summary of debt on page twenty, the line across the top is our twenty-six cents INS tax rate. And you base these vertical bars on, if we were to do a five hundred million dollar bond?
Right, right. Five hundred and also thirty years in straight line. And so, you know, there's really four tools that are at our disposal to keep us under that line. So the commercial paper program that we're doing, that's saving us basically a penny a year, okay? The variable rate issues, we're not accounting for those in those out years. So we will be doing more variable rate issues, of course, staying within the twenty-five percent overall threshold. We have the future refundings, you know, two hundred and twenty-two million in the future that we'll be refunding. And that'll be in the next summer for sure. We'll do some of that, and then some the following summer. And then just our overall debt structure, you know, you see a lot of white space in between that, that top line and the debt payments out in those, in those future years, and that's, that's debt capacity. There's plenty of capacity underneath that line. But we're also optimistic that our, that we were conservative on the property value projection, so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, that was five percent for three years, and then three percent for six.
Yes, sir.
And zero percent thereafter. That's pretty conservative.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, well, very, very nice report. And Dr. Martinez, thank you for your portion of that. It is clear, a lot of planning has gone into that and leading up to proposed bond for next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other questions? Ms. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. So Mr. Rice touched on a couple of things that I wanted to speak to. Let me just follow up on the HVAC at Willeridge. Did you, you said something about the duct, duct work being replaced or cleaned, or what was the situation? Did you say something about that?
Duct heaters we're replacing.
Duct heaters?
Correct, inside building.
Okay, and then what about the duct work itself? That's...
It's been cleaned through the mold remediation. It's all been scrubbed and cleaned, what could be cleaned. The rest was completely replaced.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that information. And then if we look at the, the information you gave us about the bond program overall, I think if I summarized or looked at those slides kind of altogether, it looks like you've got a projected bond program balance of about eleven million dollars or slightly over, with about a little over a hundred million dollars not committed at this point. So we have about a ten percent estimation about, at this point, about a ten percent estimation of savings of that. Maybe that's not quite right, but you can kind of think of it as a contingency or as an uncommitted amount. Would, would that be accurate, Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am, but just for clarification purposes, this amount is above and beyond what's left in that hundred million you're speaking about. That, that money itself has contingency built in that we are not touching here. We're anticipating in this number that it would all be used up, which we have trended that we're not doing that. We're having money, and that's why we are where we are. So this is above and beyond the contingency that's already built into the remaining projects. And the remaining projects are really not your, you know, high-risk type projects that are left in the final phase.
Okay, well, that's good. I know that the Lakeview Elementary roof started leaking last week. I got a message about that. So there might be more risk than we, than we know, but anyway. Okay, thank you. So that, so that sounds like good information, basically. It sounds like we're, we're on a good path, and thank you for all your hard work on that because I know that's a big team effort to keep those projects going and on schedule. because I know that's a big team effort to keep those projects going and, and on schedule, so, and certainly on budget. And then the last thing that I just want to highlight, and Mr. Rice alluded to it, but it is the net present value savings of the $15 million through our, through our debt management, and that's very, very nice and certainly has led, you know, to the, to the tax reduction we've been able to provide for our citizens. And so thank you for your efforts in, in making that happen, and we'll look forward to staying under that line going forward, and thank you for your active management.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Thanks again to the team for the presentation, for all your hard work, and keeping us on time and under budget. All right, next up is for board discussion, the potential use of our HEB Excellence in Education Cash Award money. As you all know, we have $30,000 in the bank to spend as the board sees fit. We had a $5,000 cash award for being a finalist, plus a $25,000 cash award for winning. So that gives us $30,000 to spend. So I wanted to bring this to the board and have a conversation for how, for ideas from you guys and how we might go about spending that money. So I'm going to open the floor up for comment and suggestions. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. Well, I had two quick ones that I'll just throw out there. One, we were able to win this award, very prestigious award, actually, through a lot of hard work and investment in our board leadership. And I would like to recommend that we take a portion of the money, maybe $6,200, and invest in Tasby's new Exceptional Governance Training. There are five sessions. They're about three hours long, talking about what's at stake, setting a vision for opportunity and achievement, essential levers, key elements of improved learning and teaching. Session three is taking stock, where are we now and where are we going? Session four, structuring for success, how will we know when we get there? And session five, oversight for excellence, the ongoing role and work of the board. But in addition to that, I think you had some good ideas you shared with me earlier about potentially making some scholarships available for students at our, at our high schools, and maybe something at the CTE Center. And so I think that we've come such a long way, really, through the hard work of this board and Dr. Dupree and the administration, and I really want to continue to invest in board development to keep it going, as well as share some of the winnings by providing scholarships to some of our deserving seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have other suggestions? Mrs. James?
Well, thank you, yeah, thank you, Mr. Rice. That's a, I kind of like that suggestion. What I had written down as ideas is board training and board leadership development, because I agree with you that we, we want to sustain our, our level of engagement and our level of activity and our level of excellence. So I didn't have specific, a specific suggestion, but I appreciate your suggestion. I also wrote down team building, sometimes speakers, team building for the board or executive team, that might be an option. And I liked the ideas of investing also in the student leadership program. The board sponsors that, and we've talked for a long time about how the development of student, student leadership across the district is really important, and I'd like to see this, take that to the next level. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Helliger?
Well, good evening. I definitely like the suggestions that have already been brought forward, definitely the leadership development for, continuous leadership development for the board as well as scholarships. But I also wanted to just kind of piggyback on something that you said that sparked my interest around the student leadership. We have a student leadership program that's sponsored by the board that only a select few students get to attend every year. But I was wondering, could we use some of those funds at the school for a smaller-type program, workshops, or something like that, as some of our high schools, maybe a kind of a, I don't know, a day, two days, three days, something like that, where they can, more kids can participate in, that maybe just didn't make, you know, the top cut, I guess, of our student leadership program, but are well-deserving students that are maybe on the fence, those kinds of things that could benefit from that type of exposure and experience. And you, as you all know, it's, to me, it's not necessarily just the top students that we're looking at, but those kids that are really need an opportunity to, they have, they have, they have all the right things, but just need a little push and that opportunity and of exposure to different things, I think they will benefit from, from some of those dollars.
Good, thank you, Ms. Helliger. Anybody else? Mr. Burdine?
I also like all the, all the ideas that were talked about. Team building activities, leadership development, scholarships are great, especially in regards to CTE. I think that's a great idea, so I think we're on the right track here.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I like most of those ideas as well. As far as money for student leadership opportunities, having just returned from Taiwan, it'd be nice to see if we can use some of that money to allow maybe a couple more kids to, to do that, maybe some of our kids, maybe even some of those folks to come here, because that's also an issue, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. So from my input, I, as Mr. Rice said, I had discussed with him earlier, I liked the idea of maybe spreading out some of the money and offering $1,000 scholarships, maybe one per high school, to a student who has financial need. That would allow us to touch each one of the high schools, and I don't know what kind of program at the CTE Center, but I also like the, the leadership pouring into our, our student leadership program in some way, whether it's the, the leadership program we have here or expanding it out. So maybe what would help us, Dr. Dupree, is if your team could give us some, some ideas. I mean, you guys have heard what we've, and I've made lists, and I can pass it on to you, but you've heard what the board cares about and where we might want to put some of this money. So maybe you guys could give us some ideas of what, what the leader, a leadership opportunity might look like for our students, or what, a way, and maybe give us some cost estimates for those, so we can see how we might, could spread some of this money around a little bit. Ms. Helliger, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was kind of doing some simple math. So we've got 11 high schools with $1,000, that's $11,000. If we, let's say, for example, if we do the program that Mr. Rice, that's 6,200, so that's 17, too, leaving us with around a little over, almost $13,000 to kind of do some other stuff with, if that's what we choose to do.
Right. Yeah, and maybe give us some options with some price tags next to them, and then we can, the board can weigh in. We can decide what, what our priorities are. Sound good?
Love it.
All right, thank you. With that, we are going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code and those sections listed in the agenda, as well as for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.